...session for Ruthina had to leave, her daughter's not feeling well. So she's probably the third person. Go ahead and start the work session and the crisis response team is the only item on here. So.
Sure. So we've had a couple of different opportunities to talk about this the last month and a half or two months. And I think one thing I'd just like to keep drawing us back to is kind of those three big things around crisis response, right? What do we do in the event of crisis? And, you know, I think tonight even if we need to maybe frame what we're talking about in terms of that, we can have a conversation around that. Like what are we, you know, what types of events are we talking about? Because I, you know, I see this as our kind of our major event, right? Something that we would routinely deal with. The second part of it, after dealing with the immediacy of the event, is always providing that care, right? That we want to make sure we're doing those wraparound supports and care for the individual involved or for the school and community involved or however many segments of our district is affected by that. And then the third thing is the violence prevention strategies that we also put into place and not to lose sight of that. The things provided for you tonight are a timeline. As we talked about last time, is what a timeline we could work through with this. And I think, you know, kind of backward mapping from that, what we tried to do is that we would have district and building teams operational for the fall of 2020. And then working, like I said, backwards from that. And the other piece is the roles and responsibilities of a crisis response coordinator. And we tried to kind of rank order those and prioritize those or group those accordingly to, you know, maybe the big chunks of what that job would look like, remembering that we agreed to try to stay away from a job description at this point. More to talk in that frame. And so just kind of, I guess, a quick walkthrough of the timeline there in front of you, really kind of November, December. What I would see is kind of our critical steps around this are contacting the other districts listed at the bottom and trying to learn about their process around crisis response. Some of those are more local to us or more regional to us at least. Some of them are farther away, so that may affect our ability on what that looks like in terms of communication and learning opportunities to those. We're also currently researching non-violence prevention strategies. We've received some training on those. And I think we're closer to probably implementation stage on those things, obviously, because we know those are just good things to do. They involve raising student voice around those things. And we can talk about some of those in more detail, too. Those would include things like the Say Something campaign or the MVP training that we've here recently received. And so then as you get into December, you see that the research portion continues there with the other districts and then kind of action and implementation. I really feel like while community engagement is a large part of this process, we have to know what we're talking to the community about. And really, so in some way, shape or form, as we engage them, we need to be talking from some type of a framework and some type of a model. And so there in December, you see a recommended model of crisis response that in some way we would recommend a model to you around what that would look like. We can obviously talk about if that timeframe works or doesn't work. And then also the implementation of some of those violence prevention strategies. And I think we're still trying to monitor that, too, based on the staff that's received the training and when we can really start to work with some of our students or our staff trainers on what that might look like. As you move into January, you see, it's kind of hard to look at January without February as well, right? And you see the social media monitoring platforms. We would target a presentation to you around that timeframe to try to get those two groups in to say exactly what does this look like? What happens? What are the things you're looking for? What are the things you're not looking for? How's the data protected? All of those questions we know are important to answer. And then also beginning that process around community engagement, because as you continue that action and implementation stage really talks about having a crisis response model adopted by that point, moving forward with hiring a crisis response coordinator and then implementing and continuing to implement those violence prevention strategies.
And excuse me for just interrupting for a second, Matt. So you're talking in January, hiring someone?
That would be the target, yep. That's why it's listed in January is so that we would try to post and hire that position to move forward with some type of crisis response framework, right? Because we, I think part of that's a bandwidth piece for us, that if we are really going to be able to move forward with trying to implement some of these things and move forward with this, whatever the model we want to use is, we need somebody around to do that and do that work. So we can definitely come back to that point. Again, these were just suggestions, so none of them firm, none of them moved on. The only thing we've really moved on is those non-violence prevention strategies and working with those. In the February timeframe, then, the community engagement would continue. We targeted decision on a social media monitoring platform. We would start to determine key staff members to serve on teams and then start to work with establishing some protocols and procedures for crisis response. And as I think you consider that one, you can tell that we also in March and April moved to then incorporating that community feedback into those protocols and procedures. So again, having this idea of a model to take to them, letting them share their concerns, trying to incorporate that feedback as we report back to you about what makes sense or what doesn't make sense as we try to localize that model, right? And keep integrity to the model, but at the same time, make sure it fits our community's needs and desires in that regard. So that work is kind of in concert, the doing the protocols and procedures work while also trying to make sure we're incorporating that community feedback into it. As you move through March and April, you also see mention of formalizing and building those community partnerships with the different community partners listed below. As we're going to the community to seek feedback on protocols and procedures, we see those entities that would be partners in the work is obviously important feedback, is an important part of that feedback loop. And then trying to build how would we work together in that sense and how could we provide supports to students and to school communities when involved in this framework. And then so as you kind of leave April there and head towards May, the idea would be we'd have those protocols and procedures for the model starting to be rounded out and formalized. And then we would move into a training component over the summer months with the idea of being ready there in August. And so at the bottom, you, like I said, had kind of referenced it, my mouse isn't working. You see the different districts to research, the community partners to engage. Really, the only thing new on that list are what I tried to do is consider some of the groups that you guys went to for community engagement around the boundaries that would make sense to go to for this topic. And then also consider some other ones that we may not have had on there before. But I thought key ones would be the Equity Advisory Committee, the District Parent Organization, Iowa City Area Education Association. You can tell we have Black Voices Project, the Center for Worker Justice, which I think is a good voice for Hispanic Latino families. And then some of these other ones we get into would be really about how would they help provide services or support when involved in a situation. And those were on the previous outline that I provided before, so. Maybe we, before we go into the roles and responsibilities, what kind of feedback or questions do you have about the timeline or where are we missing the mark or what things are you seeing?
Well, one thing, yeah. One thing I guess that kind of comes out at me is, okay, we're scheduling to hire someone in January at the same time we're starting community engagement on the model. And so if we're hiring in January and we're already into November and we've got some holidays coming up and everything, from an AR perspective, when are you putting that out for an applicant? Chase, is that mid-December or is it first of the year we're putting this out for hire? Because you're, when it's.
Well, it's listed in January, so I think what we'd be targeting is when we return from break that we'd be putting that posting up and looking for somebody at that point. I think the substance of your question, Phil, is, you know, I guess maybe the feedback we need to hear around the community engagement portion, are we going out for community engagement to decide if we're doing this or not? Or are we going out to community engagement to decide how we're doing it? Because those are two very different questions.
No, I understand. And but, and I can remember many times we just went to the community just for their thoughts and their ideas. And I think in this one, that might be one, just there might be some benefit from just hearing from the community, you know? Having a, you know, if you want to call it a listening post or whatever, but you go and say, what are your thoughts on this? We've heard of them from community, from community content, but, you know, have a forum where people could come in and engage them for their ideas and their thoughts in a forum before we hire someone and then we start. That's, that's one of my thoughts is that with that, I'd like to have a little discussion with the community before we get to the point where we have someone and then we'll work on it.
So I guess my question on that is who, who do you hire for something like this? What's that candidate look like in general? Where do we look? What are we drawing from? How far out do we go? I mean, I don't know. Who typically fills these roles? What type, what type of background do they have? Are they?
Right. I think that's some of what we would probably try to learn from some of these other districts is ask questions around, okay, who filled this role? How did you go about trying to pursue, you know, recruitment efforts to have somebody in that role? Because it's not a typical position for an education institution, right? In this, in this field. So I think that would be some of the questions we would, we would need to ask.
Just a couple, just the things I would have, the Sudanese American Association out there, so the community partners to engage, which is, that's a big part of our community. And you'll, my experience is you get a lot of engagement, people who are really invested in education. It's, and that was the case in the boundaries project. That was by far the biggest group of folks that showed up with great questions and diverse opinion, you know, really across the spectrum, you know, from, coming from different perspectives. So I think that'd be important. And then just so you know, juvenile justice, youth development includes a lot of both the community partners and on both sides of that, courts are involved. Their next meeting is February 3rd. They asked me to give an update at the last meeting and I don't know, that might, it might be an opportunity to engage with quite a few of these groups in one meeting. And Lori Nash, it wasn't Lomet Jokowi, now Lori Nash was the one at the county that's kind of taken that on. And it just might be an opportunity to get in front of a lot of these groups at the same time. Rvap's there.
What's the group called, though?
JJYD, Juvenile Justice Youth Development Task Force.
Okay.
Johnson County Juvenile, lots of acronym there. But it, yep, just to cover a lot of these spaces.
And when you said Lori's name, I was remiss not to have another one down that I worked with her through the Disproportionate Minority Commission as well. And so that would be another group.
Okay.
That's connected through Lori, so.
And then the, I think the, that just had a form of special ed, mental health advisory.
Care group.
Parent. I can't remember that. Yeah, that's, again, super engaged, super informed.
Yep. Good.
Very briefly, because we talked about last time, you know, taking a road trip to someplace, but some, I don't know if it was Paul sent, but it was a place we were asked to check out. And I kind of went on to what they had out publicly on the web, kind of looking at the demographics of those districts to try and find ones that were more closely related to our demographics. And I forgot to have it with me. I want to say Urberville was fairly close in just sort of size, a little bit different balance. There was one of these, and I'm not going to get it right, so I'm not even going to guess which one it is, but one of them had a public school system that was somewhere in the neighborhood of like 75% minority, but they had like 15 private schools or charter schools or something else that was then 90% white. So whichever one that was, I will figure it out. That's not one I think we want to get any feedback from. But I wanted to make sure as we kind of discuss who we're going to kind of talk to, to at least have that frame in mind as we're looking at what's going to work at places very different demographics might not translate here. So I wanted to make sure we're looking at that.
And getting back to the timeline, how many meetings, board meetings are in December? Is there one or two? Just one? You have one board meeting. So you have a new board that's going to have one meeting in November where they get together and they go out and talk and say, great, you're on the board. Then you have one meeting and then in January, you're hiring.
Yeah, I mean, I have.
Hiring this again. So you're doing your travel, your data collection, and you're going forward that way.
So I think the, at least my thought on the timeline, and of course, we can push it back, is that the December meeting would be like a presentation of what we found from the other districts, the research behind it. If there's variance from the models, I mean, basically, we've talked about the Virginia model, right? And so if they're using something outside of the Virginia model, you'd have a chance to hear and digest that. And then in January, we would come back when it says crisis model adopted is make a decision on which of those. And so maybe the hiring, the crisis response coordinator in January, there, maybe that's late January, maybe that's, you know, because obviously that would have to be after the board meeting where there's some kind of model adopted, otherwise we can't even post the position analogy, talk to this person about what kind of model they're using. Or maybe it's bumped to February, right? I think that, that's definitely can be flexible, so. But just so you understood my thinking, I guess on the December, when it says recommended model would be kind of summarizing what we've learned in those other districts. And then in January, when it says adopting one, that we kind of have some direction on what we're, again, going out to talk to the community about, about this is a model, right? We want to use, what's your concerns about it? How do we try to explain it so people have an understanding about it? Because I think, at least from the media inquiries I'm getting about it, you know, there's just lack of understanding still in general of what we're talking about, when we talk about crisis response.
I'm a little, I guess my concern is, we write a job description, we hire somebody, and then we go to community feedback. And what if it goes so far south and not even this? I mean, it could be great. This person could help facilitate that, this person could, but it could also be one where they say, well, you've come to us, but you already hired the person, so you already know what you're going to do. And, and it's, and then we've lost that trust. Because I think that's a big piece. What we're trying to do is kind of build up some trust, especially with a lot of these groups. And is it put in the cart before the horse? I mean, I get it from a timeline perspective, we want this person to have a lot of time, but I.
Well, I just think it goes back to my question about then are we going to ask them if we're doing it or how we're doing it? Because those are two very different questions. Because if the question is if, then I just think we have a lot of different things to probably, a different way to approach.
I actually think it's how. But I think if we go and we say, how should we do this? And by the way, here's a person who's going to do it that we've already selected and we've already written a job description for it. I feel that says we already kind of know how we're going to do it, you know? And it's based on this model. And that's my worry is if we say, how do we do this? And then the feedback from the community is very different than what we were thinking, but we've already hired a person. And because it's uncharted territory, like we said, we don't even know the type of person we might hire. It feels, January feels really soon. And, and people might, and I don't know, it can be hard, people might say, you knew who this was going to be in May. You had an idea who you wanted for this coordinator. I mean, I just.
So I think, sure. And I get what you're saying. And so I agree with Matt, there's a variety of questions, but if we kind of backwards map this, as Matt's, you know, looking with the end in mind, saying that the program, the board likes, would like to be operational in August, you know, we need 16 to 90 days to do training with staff to do that. You'd like this new coordinator to be able to do that. And, you know, to be fair to that person, to bring them on to launch something new, they need, again, another 16 to 90 days to do the work he or she needs to do on the front end to get ready for those trainings. And so if you look at that in mind and we build that back, I think that there is some flexibility as Matt's putting out, but that we also would have some probably hard deadlines of, you know, we want somebody onboard by March 1st if we expect them to be offering trainings in June, July, and even into August. And so if you look at it that way, it does provide some of that, but we can't bring somebody in and the next day expect them to roll out training. And you're not saying that, right? So I kind of look at it differently. I look at it from the end and work it backwards rather than from the beginning, because then it lets us set up, okay, if we do want to go to the community first, what is that timeframe that we have? Because we probably want to introduce this person to the community. So we want to have, what I'm hearing you say, JP, is maybe two different tiers of community meetings to bring in and get some inputs, we figure this out. But then once we bring that person on, we'd want them to go back out to the community a little bit.
Well, I get what you're saying about not seeming disenthusiastic.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think that's what we want to do either. I, and I do think in a perfect scenario, right, December wouldn't be the month in front of us and we would start community engagement sooner around some of that as well. I just think when we evaluated, is December really a good month to try to do community engagement? That that might not be the best time to try to do that or the validity surrounding some of that community engagement might not be the best time. And so like Chase said, I mean, yes, there's some timeline things we need to keep as realities, but certainly understand your point there, too. You don't want to be asking about something where it appears that, you know, the decision's already been made or there's a direction area slated.
What you said about two tiers of community engagement makes a lot of sense. I think the first tier is going to be a lot more targeted, smaller groups, real specific input. And then, you know, once you hire the person, I think that's when you introduce them to the larger public. But I think what we're looking for are, you know, I want to recognize potholes before we run into them and say, if we can anticipate there are groups that are openly hostile or mistrustful, that we target those first and build that trust up and not just make them feel like they're a part of the process, but really engage them as part of the process in that. Because I think, you know, if this is up in August, if this is, if we are, maybe we pilot it in a few schools first. I mean, I just think, I think it's important. I don't think it's if, I think it's how. But I also think no, it has to be sustainable because this person's job, you know, we're going to be approving the budget for this. And it'd be very easy for a new board down the road to be like, budget cut, this is gone. If it's not successful, if there's people, you know, there's just so many components to this. And even if nothing goes wrong with data collection or monitoring social media, it does provide a lot of opportunity for folks to perceive things that have been brought up, retaliation, trust and all that. And so to me, those are more long-term issues that we have to work on regardless of this. And this might be an opportunity with a really important position, I believe, to go about it in a real genuine way, even if it slows our rollout. Because I agree, I think the timeline is right as far as we want it in August, but maybe we, maybe it's too much to chew to say, we can do every single school by August in a, in a robust, sustainable way. And who we hired, I mean, that's going to matter, right? Because once they're hired, the job that they do, I mean, you know, it could be hard. And then they might run into pitfalls and they might not be able to meet timelines. Hiring the best person, there's just going to be unfortunate. I don't want to put the cart before the horse and then end up having to defend ourselves for, you know, a couple more years.
Well, and like I said, I mean, there was not a hard stop on that by any means. I think even on the last timeline, I showed you guys, we had that position posted, you know, to be posted hired much later in the year. And there was kind of feedback from the last time, well, maybe we need to do something sooner. But now as we kind of start to see where community engagement fits around that, you know, I think, yes, it can be slid back into that, you know, late winter type category there and we can bring that back. So I think that would still give us enough room, like Chase said, I mean, when we think through those kind of amount of days to get up to speed on board.
Because we might, I think we'll get some, if we reach out and if we go to communities, I think we'll get, we don't necessarily have to talk, I think if we target, we talk to certain people, we're getting a whole lot of feedback in a short amount of time. And it may, then that may help guide us, like how quickly we can move from that point. And once we've addressed concerns and we say, okay, here's your opinion about that, well, what if we, what if it looks like this? I think that can move pretty quickly. And then once a person's onboard, maybe that's more of the introduction, then you're introducing to the public and it's, it's a bigger event and what form or something like that.
I have a couple of thoughts. So one, I'm wondering if another row could be added and it could just be real crystal clear about at what points in this timeline would the board be taking action on things?
Yes. When, when is the board going to vote? And because we're talking a lot of things that there hasn't even been any, I mean, from my memory, other than I think we okayed going for, well, do we have any votes on record that the board anywhere on this thing?
I don't think there's been a vote, but.
No, no, I agree.
I guess the indication you've given is hard to keep moving forward in this conversation. So that's different.
I understand your predicament, Matt, and I appreciate everything that you're putting into this, but the board has got to give staff clear direction. And if you're going to, it, it isn't just, well, we'll go out to the community, if the board needs to, either on their own, but that, but you've, Amy's absolutely right. You've got to have some, some votes built into this that you show, this is, this is our priority. We're going, you're either doing it or not. And you're going to have a timeline that way that you say we're doing. And I think you definitely, that vote should be there before you start hiring somebody, you know? And it's been brought, it's been, it's been brought up a couple of times that, you know, we're supposed to approve contracts and things of that nature that way, to make sure that it's, it's done properly and it's not, we're following, but we're leading or at least going jointly. But definitely there needs to be some board action that's, that's, that shows the community, gives, gives the community direction.
And I think that's what we were close to target on there. I like Amy's suggestion about, you know, because if you do see some of those action implementation items, I guess I have in my head that that's action implementation with you, right? That if we recommend a model, we're recommending it to you. If we adopt one, that's through you. If we hire somebody, that's through you. If we make a decision on social media monitoring, that's a decision you guys have made. And so I think, like you said, those checkpoints would be really valuable and they're going to hold us accountable to making sure the work's done in between, right? That we're due back at this point to do this. And so we can monitor what, what we're doing in between those meetings at that time. So we could even chart those out the next conversation by board meeting day, right?
I think that would help, yeah. Especially with new board members coming on and having, I mean, this is like, you're like a boom, you're just like, big decision. And I know folks, I mean, are pretty big, but that's a lot for you first, like, you know what I mean?
What are you envisioning for the hiring process for this person? Is, is it going to be a community, like interview committee? Or is this going to be more of a traditional hiring in HR office? What are you envisioning for that?
Do you want me to speak to that?
Sure.
I think given the, given the visibility of the role, given the position the role to the organization, we would treat it more as an administrative hire and follow-up process, which normally has a community committee as well as an administrative committee. So we get both of those voices represented in the room. And of course, you know, also off these, the other staff besides just administrators or associations, but we would definitely want that community voice involved in it. And so we would look at a multi, multi-pronged interview process. So it just wouldn't be one group of people that we're sitting down with, with the candidates. We haven't flushed it out completely yet. I think there's a lot of things we could work through before that, but I would see it aligning itself more when we bring people into the district level and the process that we go through with those individuals.
And that might be a part of sort of this first tier, reaching out to those, is finding folks who might, I mean, that'd be a great way to help build a trust, like be on the committee. Identifying those people who will be good voices in that process. I think that'd go a long way to help.
Yeah, I think that's key because you want to build some bridges before you get too far down the path where people feel like they've already been left out. So being part of the hiring, I think, would be helpful. I'm glad you were thinking that. One thing I just want to put out there, I've said it before, but I do have concerns that the pay level is going to attract a person that has experience in this role. I would just say my thoughts are wait for the right person. If the right person isn't available in January, my thought would be, don't hire the wrong person, wait and see. Because I don't know, you know, timeline wise, you know, with folks leaving jobs and looking for jobs and contracts and those kinds of things, if somebody's already doing this role somewhere else, that'd be, you know, that'd be great because to have somebody with some experience, but they might not want to leave in January, especially in Iowa. But I don't know, that would be my two cents, it's just. But I don't know, that would be my two cents, is just be cognizant of the fact that it might not be as simple as just putting it out there.
I mean, I don't think it will be. I agree with you, I don't think it will be that simple. And I think that goes back to the delicate nature of the timeline. In some ways, the earlier, even if we, even if the timeline says we're not gonna hire until March 1st, right? I'm just making that data, I'm not trying to change anything. But that doesn't mean we want to, we want to wait to advertise until February 20th. You know, we still might want to advertise in the middle of January. And so now it's back to that, as I said, delicate nature of you're going out, but how do you build that trust? And people are saying that you already have this posted. Well, lower to your point, if we don't, if we wait and then compress that window, it's going to be that much harder to attract the right individual to the position. And so we have to continue to think through all these pieces and how you keep all the different plates spinning. And it doesn't mean that we can't revise the job description if we get different feedback from the community. But we want this out there. We want it to be advertised. We want people that might be interested in doing this work to start having that in their mind. Because you're right, people can't just change their lives on a dime. We can't advertise in January and most likely ask somebody from outside the community. Not saying it's gonna be somebody from outside the community, it could be somebody that's already here to move, to come to Iowa City on two weeks' notice. That sometimes not, is not always that practical. So we do have to look more than just two or three weeks ahead when we're looking at some of these pieces.
Just for comparison's sake, I think I interviewed at the university in May and finally heard back in August.
We tried to be quicker than that.
I'm just saying, locally, like, it's notorious for super slow hires over there.
But, I mean, we're having our first hiring event for teachers for next year in December, right? And we're going to go after teachers in earnest in February, you know, it's kind of a preview. And so those are hiring events in February for an August start. And I think that is, in education, you're usually looking five, six months down the path. And so it would not hurt us to get something out there sooner rather than later. Phil, to your point about, you know, are we gonna wait until after Christmas? Well, if the board decides they want to start the hiring process in January, we need to be advertising before the winter break. And so I think it's all part of that.
You know, I think we just need to slow down a little bit, but I think kind of as soon as possible. And the possibility would be, we've begun the process of community engagement. Because it is, it's delicate, kind of, I mean, there's no doubt about it.
Would it be too much to have kind of a steering committee of community members that would be at the table with the board, having these discussions as we go along? So there's the community engagement forums, but to also have people be here at the table? Would that be too much? I honestly don't know. I'm not sure if that'd be helpful. I'm just, I'm trying to build bridges.
These are open meetings and nothing precludes the board from bringing people in and...
But more formalized, so people are really part of this. And it's not just, we're taking it to you, we've already decided. I don't know, I'm just putting it out there.
This is an offshoot of the safety committee.
Yeah, I mean, there's members that still are participating. Yeah, I think your challenge is who do you, who do you invite to join the board at the table? And how do you make sure that you get a cross-section of the community? I mean, you named a couple additional groups that weren't on the list already tonight. I'm not saying it can't happen. I think, you know, Phil's got an idea of starting from one of the committees. But is that the best committee to start from, or is it the equity committee to start from? And where do you, where do you draw those folks from? I don't have a good answer to that one.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I think that's why you set up the community engagement. About how that would work or how that would come together. I guess in my mind, I think, you know, as you get closer to the, like, protocols and procedures part, you know, and trying to flesh some of those out. I mean, because I feel like some of the input-based stuff, right, is gonna be around the larger concept and model. And then as we get to protocols and procedures and about how it actually works, you know, day-to-day or in the specifics, that's where maybe then having some of those partners at the table would be beneficial. As we have questions as it comes up and...
That one's just one group, is students. I just found in that CEP development process, the student voice was amazing. You know, it was just that I learned a lot, wow, this is a student perspective. It was super powerful and they were, I mean, it wasn't only a student who showed up to look at that CEP.
Yeah.
I mean, so you get that. And then, I mean, they're the ones most affected. So I just remember to keep that in mind. I mean, I think a lot of times we end up leaving them out and I think it's, you know, super valuable when we get there.
We had two students on, the safety committee. Miro, who presented from City High today, and DeShaw from West Side, who was probably at the CEP.
So I'm here and take this back, match it up with some board meeting dates, kind of add the action items for when board would need to take action. Look to push a little bit of time between the community engagement and hiring the crisis response coordinator, better define how those might work together, that we've started and begun to collect some of that community engagement around the concept and model. So space that out a little bit. And then I really think the next opportunity is if we can get in front of you, the 10th of December, is to talk about, you know, here's what we've learned from other districts. Here's the models being used, or, you know, here's our best bet on what we think moving forward a model looks like and the one we should talk from. I mean, we've obviously, like I said, provided to the Virginia model a couple different times. I think that's what we'll see, you know, in some of these districts, but there could be some differences. Sean, I appreciate your comments about making sure the demographic, you know, profile of the district is similar to ours, or, you know, and as Charlie brought up last time too, I think you see in some of those responsibilities, chief this time, how are you count for the equity portion of it to make sure that, you know, the disproportionality is accounted for and that we're constantly monitoring that. And so I think the only other thing I would just kind of throw out the question, because I think as we hear, or as I've, you know, fielded interviews or questions from community members or hearing people talk about it, is do we have an understanding here of what a crisis is? And like when we're saying crisis response, what we're talking about? Because I do think that's where it's getting lost a little bit in some of the concerns. And so that's why I say too, when we engage the community about it, what are we actually talking about using this for, right? And we've been all over the place a little bit about that. And I think that might be, if you guys have questions or what it means to you, I mean, I think we need to be solid on that in some sense before we go out and start talking to people about crisis response. Because I think some people jump to, well, if there's a fight in the hallway, you're gonna use crisis response. That's not what we're talking about, right? I'm talking about when we get a Snapchat in a half hour about a kid that wants to bring a weapon to school tomorrow, how do we respond, right? That's what I'm saying when I say crisis events, so...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have to define that. When, like, I don't know if we define that and then you want us to vote on a model. Do we...
I just mean from like a baseline understanding. I don't mean like, do you, can you detail every scenario we're talking about?
Oh, no, no.
I think making that gross distinction between the two there in some way, shape, or form. I mean, is that what you guys have in your head that we're talking about when we talk about? And I think that's maybe assumed by us since we've been talking about it, but I don't want to presume that either, that if that's something we need to bring back with district process around the model or what the model includes, or if you want to see some more information about the type of things we're talking about, then that could be something very critical we could share out early on too. So that then after that, when we talk to the community, maybe there's some better understanding about these are the types of things we're...
And I would want to know kind of what that is and then that, is that what the principals are saying? You know, is that they all kind of have that shared definition of crisis? Because, yeah, I'm imagining they bring a weapon to school and suicide.
Right.
Or any threats of like...
Self-harm or mass harm.
Self-harm or harm against others, you know, is what comes to mind.
Can we start to put together the PowerPoint of what would be taken to the community that would include that information? I don't know when you could have that, and I don't know who does that exactly. In the case, I'm thinking of the boundary situation, the board members really, we put that together.
Yeah, I think about like a slide of what is crisis response, what is it not?
Because that's gonna be really key in that community engagement. It's, this is what we're talking about. This is what we're not talking about.
And then really closely after that would be, here's what a crisis is. And then be really sensitive about who really needs to know and be really clear about that. Like, this isn't, you know, a kid posts a picture of self-harm on Facebook and now there's 40 people meeting at 8:00 AM. You know, so that we understand what the reaction level is and the community understands kind of what, you know, how we're gonna control that. And because I think that's the thing too, is, you know, people in crisis response, I mean, now everybody's gonna know everything and every school is, you know, and so... Because, you know, it is kind of the way we do it when like an ambulance shows up at an elementary school. Every parent in this district gets an email saying, an ambulance showed up at an elementary school. And that, and this won't be like that, you know, because that is our practice. And I'm not, you know, right or wrong, I think that's good that we put that information out there. But I think we want people to know that it won't be like that here.
I guess the question's in my head, and we kind of, and I apologize to extend the conversation, but it goes with what Matt was saying and tied to this is, Phil brought up, you know, what has the board voted on or what are those action steps for the board? And I think that is a question, is, you know, what does the board see as the points where they need to take, to take action? And we've talked a lot about the job description. It's not something we normally bring to the board for approval. And I know every situation's unique and especially given where we've been with this one. This is a different circumstance than other jobs that we've created or we've been hiring for. But I use that as an example as, that's not something in our typical practice, we would think, you know what, we need to get the board to vote on this. And so I don't want us to miss those things in the process. And we don't even necessarily have that lined out tonight. But as we work through this, we don't want to miss, we don't want to not bring the board what the board thinks are those crucial points that the board needs to either vote on or get consensus of at this table. And so that would be nice to kind of, as we do our thinking, what are those checkpoints the board's looking for as we continue to develop this? Because it, as Phil said, with no direction, it's hard for us to know exactly how we need to start narrowing this to where the board wants it to be, or when the board wants us to be bringing things back to it.
I think one thing that would help inform that for me is, you know, if it's gonna be something controversial and that we're gonna get a lot of community comment on, that feels more like that. But if it's something that we've sort of vetted and we know, and we've gotten info from the community and we have people involved in the process, where, you know, I mean, that to me would be the difference of public vote on something like a job description as opposed to just a presentation on, hey, this is, we've met with these groups, here's the feedback we've got, and this is what, this is what we want to go forward with. And the board could say, this is way off base, or like, you know, just give a cent without a vote. I mean, that's kind of, I think those would go together, kind of, once you get the feedback. And you get a sense of if something's gonna be hot-buttoned or really cause a stir, then I think that's something we probably raise a little action item. But, you know, the model, obviously, you know, and saying, go forth and hire, I think, you know, by this time.
Because I think the board has given us feedback and has given us direction in this process, I do. And so that's, but if we haven't formalized it enough, I think that's what we need to know. Because I believe that the board has been very communicative with the administration on, hey, we think you're veering too much this direction, you need to bring it back. And it haven't always been in the form of votes. And if that's, I guess that's my question, if that's what we need to bring, so it's more like that. Because I do believe the board has been very open and very upfront with us in trying to put out the guardrails, but most of that's happened here.
I've been fine with the process here. I think the verdicts and we're getting, it feels more back and forth and trying to seek for understanding. It's just weird.
Yeah, sorry.
I don't mean to decept on your toes.
No, I just think, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking about with what Chase says is like, if you're gonna want to have an official vote to represent one of these steps, that just changes maybe where it's scheduled, like that it's not in a work session, so we don't wait two more weeks to do it. Like, if you want it at the board talk, it's actual action item, then we just need to make sure we get that calendar appropriately and scheduled accordingly, right? Because, like I said, we won't, it'll either delay it or we don't want to do something, you know, where you haven't necessarily directed permission on that. If you're okay with the conversation and the consent, you know, with the nodding heads and saying, yes, we're good with moving this forward, fine. I think it can keep, stay as a discussion item on a board agenda or a work session. But if you want to have an official vote to say, before we do this, we want to make sure we voted on it because either we feel like we're not all on the same page, or, you know, we want to send that symbol to the community. Those are just the things we want to make sure we get right.
The only thing is sometimes when it's an action item, then people pay attention.
Yeah.
And if it's not, and often ends after the fact. And that's what I want to just get ahead, get in front of. Before we do anything, I want to be able to get that, kind of recognize where those hotspots are gonna be and address those as much as possible.
Well, I think maybe we can detail those for you for the December meeting about the things we would maybe assume you'd want to have a vote on. Because really in December, like I said, what I have slated that we're coming back to it is information from other districts and a model that we'd say, hey, we would like you to consider this model at the following meeting, then, you know, one of the first action items we'll have, right, is that we probably in some way approve this model is what we're moving forward with to take out to the community, to vet through the community, something like that.
And that's in line with what we've kind of been doing, discussion items first.
And then if there's other things on there, we can still adjust the timeline based on other feedback you guys have.
Anything else anybody wants to add?
Do you have enough, do you have enough direction?
I think so. I mean, and I would echo what Chase said. I mean, I feel like this is, I know we're going slow, but I mean, it feels good, I guess, in a sense about, I feel like we're not doing something quicker than we're comfortable with and that we've had time to ask questions and gives us some good direction about what our next steps in between seeing you guys again are and what you're comfortable with and what you're not comfortable with. And so I think this is a big enough thing that obviously we want to get it right with how we do it, right? I mean, the most harm we could do is by doing something and doing this wrong or too quick. So, thank you.
The only topic on your business or your motion to adjourn? All favor?